And welcome to our public, to our West Orange Board of Education Virtual Policy Workshop Meeting on this Monday evening, April 12th, 2021. And also greetings to Dr. Cascone, my fellow members of the board, and Mrs. Flowers, if you would do the honor of the roll call and the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Roll call. Mrs. Huerta?
Yeah.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Here.
President Trick scales.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we are engaged in our continued policy work this evening. And before we get to that section, I would ask if Dr. Cascone has comments that he'd like to make this evening, and then we're going to move into questions on the agenda for our public. Dr. Cascone?
Thank you, President Trick Scales. I have no report above and beyond the comments I might offer, you know, as an introduction to the policy workshop. So I don't know if you want me to reserve those from we move into that section of the agenda?
That's fine. You can do it now, Dr. Cascone, and then we can just keep moving.
Okay, very good. Thank you, President Trick Scales. So right, so you know, we have, we don't have a lengthy policy agenda tonight, and I think that that's, you know, that's good news. Because what that means is, is that, you know, the board has, we are coming, believe it or not, we're in the fourth quarter, if you will, of this project. And the majority of the work that remains is really in the hands of myself and various departments as we put the remaining policies through the final administrative review. So what the board can expect is that at the April 19th meeting, and then in the two successive May meetings, can expect to see, you know, again, seeing chunks of policies, you know, move forward for a second reading and adoption. Tonight, we have some, you know, kind of some outliers, as well as just kind of some, you know, some new policies and some revisions. But I feel confidently that, you know, that the work resides largely in the hands of the administration at this point in time. And I think the board can feel pretty confidently that we'll be able to see this project through to fruition by June, as indicated in the board goals. And then I'll, I know that perhaps Mr. Rothstein, I know, has been engaging in some dialogue with Strauss Esme, and has some, some information as to, once we have those policies all updated, the estimated timeline for getting them all up onto the platform and getting that digital platform up and running. But those are, those are my comments for this evening, Mr. Trick Scales.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Little delayed reaction there. Okay, so we are now ready to take questions from the public on agenda items. So Ms. Gravteza, if you could assist us in that regard, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was at the ready to unmute you, but I saw you looking for it, and I didn't want to-
Oh, I was, I was mousing it here.
Playing the game of unlocking the car and locking it.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, at this time, we do have questions from the public on agenda items only. You're going to use the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. We do not have any call in patrons tonight. And so today, we're going to start with Julie Bookbinder. If you can please follow the prompt that's on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Julie Bookbinder, 37, Collmar. I had a few questions regarding the policy titled Remote Learning Options for Families. My first question is whether this is a policy intended to be in effect for the 2021 to 2022 school year. If this is a policy for the next school year, is there a plan to have a separate remote classroom, you know, versus the in-person such that there would not be a hybrid model? And if so, how would that be funded? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have anyone else who would like to speak on agenda items only using the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen? And that is all for public agenda items from the public.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza. Dr. Cascone?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Trick Scales. Thank you, Ms. Bookbinder, for that. That's an excellent question. This, this policy revision on the agenda for tonight is for, is really for this school year, for the 2021 school year. It, it remains to be seen, you know, where the, where the governor, I mean, the governor has made some initial public statements with regard to the extent to which school districts will be authorized to offer a virtual option. You know, my, I'm predicting that ultimately, when the rubber meets the road, that local districts will, there will be local jurisdiction to determine whether that option is offered. And I do think that it will be, I think it will be important for, for parents to have that option should they choose to exercise it. And are, you know, and again, we're very, in the very beginning stages of really doing some advanced planning for what that would look like. I would tell you that other than in some select cases, would really want to avoid doing any kind of hybrid learning next year, and, and really be able to offer, you know, if you're an onsite student, you're being taught by an onsite teacher that's servicing exclusively onsite students. And if you're a virtual student, you're being serviced by a teacher that's servicing exclusively virtual students. The question about how to fund that is a good one. Right now, we are still awaiting our allocations from understanding what our allocations are going to be through the American Rescue Act. Ms. Flowers, any, any updates in that regard?
No, Dr. Cascone, not as, not as of yet.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, the, we saw a figure published in a, in a local media outlet which had it in the neighborhood of $8 million. And we received sort of a, kind of an ambiguous communication from, from Congressman Payne's office, which looked like it might be that, but we're not exactly sure. But if that actually comes to pass, we, we are, our intention would be to utilize a portion of that funding to be able to, to fund additional salaries, which obviously would not be able to do out of, out of the local budget. Now, that would be, I would argue, most applicable and, and feasible on the elementary level. Whereas on the secondary level, what we might have is, teachers might have a section of virtual, or in some cases where you had very specialized coursework, like an AP class, in those classes, you could potentially have a hybrid situation within those more specialized classes. But the intention at this juncture and the aim is to be able to offer five days onsite all day for students, parents who, who wish that for their children, and ideally, an option for parents should they choose to exercise that. Because let's, just to give, let the line out on this, just a touch further, I think we can expect that while conditions will be improved come September, and certainly the numbers of folks who are vaccinated will be increased, the likelihood that we're still living with some, some of the implications of this pandemic are probably pretty high, right? So if I can predict, there's likely that, that folks will still be in masks, will still be going through certain health and safety checks, you know, whether they be thermal screenings. But the factor that will probably be, be loosened, if I guessed, would be relative to the social distance. No, the CDC, the DOH might still recommend three feet at a minimum. However, understanding that I think we all recognize that the aim for next year needs to be five full days, well, then I think the reality is, is that anyone who's sending their child into school is ostensibly comfortable with that not necessarily being the case. That being said, you might have some parents who are not comfortable with that distance not being exercised, and who may opt for a virtual option. But that's just a, just a little window into the thought process at this point in time. But again, Mrs. Bookbinder, this particular policy revision is for this 2021 school year.
Thank you, Dr. C.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, and we're going to begin our board policy workshops. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Rothstein and Ms. Merklinger to facilitate our work.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we haven't, Ms. Merklinger, I don't know if, if you wanted to speak through anything. I know we've got three items that we're, that are getting a first reading tonight, and I expect that we'll have a little bit of opportunity to discuss those. And then the other, there are some other policies that we took a look at. Are we discussing those policies at this meeting tonight?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I just do, do a little?
Sure.
The thing, the thing I do sometimes?
Yeah, no, sure, go right ahead.
All right. You know, I don't mean to be pedantic here, but so, so just to kind of give some context here. So the, the school facility names should be pretty straightforward. And we really just incorporated some, some basic additions to the language. And you'll see, we didn't have turnaround time to get the language to Strauss Esme and have them give us a fresh proof. So what my office did was just put together a second sheet, which just kind of highlights the revised language. It's, it's a very, it's a simple modification to the policy. To Ms. Huerta's question, we could certainly, moving forward, you know, further look at this policy, but at a bare minimum, this gives a, a policy that captures, I think, the commentary from the last meeting, but has something on file for the board that in the event something came up, you know, two weeks from now, you would have a policy to kind of generally govern how that process would happen. And the language that was added was, you know, that which was proposed by the board at the last policy meeting. The district sustainability, I did, following last meeting, did follow up with all the relevant parties. And, and to your question, Ms. Huerta, that you posed recently by email, I did follow up with Mr. Semino. And we do, in fact, and have for some time utilized green, a green approach, if you will, the chemicals that we use is aligned with that. And of course, we knew we already, you know, we weren't sure about those, those other checkboxes, I think we were pretty sure on. And now, you know, just need to ensure that we're, you know, consistently, you know, kind of focused on that as, you know, save routes to schools and having all of our schools work towards that and things of that nature. And the, and these are, of course, all on for first reading. In retrospect, I probably could have put the other three policies, oh, actually, all three of those have already gone through first reading, which is why I didn't put them on for second, because I felt we should discuss them more. And then the remote learning options for families. When we originally adopted, when we originally adopted this policy, we did so kind of really accepting verbatim the boilerplate that came to us from Strauss Esme. And of course, at that time, we didn't really necessarily understand the implications. And, and one of the pieces in that is that the current policy only requires a 30-day turnaround for a parent request to switch from hybrid, from virtual to hybrid. I did some follow-up with a number of superintendents in the county, and it's actually far more common for there to be a marking period, a period of time to wait in between. But there's really a, I moved this forward as a first reading with the intention of having a second reading and adoption on the 19th, because there's really a logistic consideration with this. And I'd like to just share that with you. So in our planning for moving to the, the four half-days for elementary students and, you know, working with principals to understand if we go to three feet in the classrooms and going classroom by classroom and understanding in each classroom, what is the maximum number of desks we can fit in a classroom at three feet, and in many cases, clearing other, other, other clutter out of the room, other furniture, and, and knowing that, and then cross-referencing that number for every single classroom with the current hybrid enrollment, if both cohorts were increased, and seeing if the classrooms could actually accommodate the number. Now, in, I would say, nine out of 10 cases, the rooms can accommodate as is the current hybrid enrollment. And in some cases, we have a wiggle room up to one or two students. In some schools, we've identified other locations where if we had more students come in, we could relocate that class. And we have other, a couple of other strategies that we can utilize. But the reality of it is, is that if we have students flowing in and out in a rolling basis between now and the end of the year, we could be over-enrolled and thereby not, not be able to actually offer compressed cohorts. So we want to set that deadline, which is, you know, I put that in my letter from Friday, so that we understand what our static cohort will be moving forward to the end of the year and know that we haven't become unsustainable from an occupancy standpoint. So that's really the edit that's being proposed for that, is that the turnaround for parent notifications is a marking period and not 30 days. So those are the, the first readings. The ones that I, that are just brought forth, you know, and obviously, Ms. Merklinger can speak in greater detail about the advertising policies, as she was kind enough to do the lifting on those and, and merge the best of the West Orange policies through our assessment policies. So I'll, I'll leave that. She can speak to her process on that. And the attendance policy is sort of just a one-off policy where I did receive some feedback from the high school administration. They've moved forward a proposed edit. And I would imagine that the board would, would probably have some questions about that proposed edit that they've made to that policy. So that's just kind of some, some high-level overview. And at that, this point, I would just turn it back over to Ms. Merklinger and Mr. Rothstein.
Sure.
Thank you.
So because we're on it, Gary, if you don't mind, if I just have one question while it's fresh. I know it's the first reading, so we may not have enough, you know, I know Dr. C may not have the answer right now. But in regards to the remote learning options, one of the things that I did notice, and I know we can edit this after the first reading, and it's a working document. But one of the things that I was just curious about is, and it's come up, I think, on several occasions, we've seen several emails from parents in the community where there's just a concern about their child's well, mental well-being. And so my only concern about saying about making it, I guess I was looking for maybe, can we change the wording a little bit so that, or put a stipulation in that should there be a reason that there needs to be that introduction of that child into school, into onsite, earlier than the marking period or the trimester? Could we do that? Just, you know, because it seems very hard, fast, and steady that, okay, you have to wait until you have to have, if you were a, a remote learner, you have to wait this amount of time, you have to have at least put in this amount of time. My concern is for the mental well-being of some of our students who their parents are, you know, have expressed concern. And we've seen a lot of those emails recently.
Yeah, I mean, I think if I'm, if I'm reading you right on this one, is, you know, putting some sort of a clause in there that, you know, you know, appeal can be presented, you know?
Yeah.
Or, or upon approval, approval by the superintendent or something like that?
Right. Yeah. I was just wondering if that's something, and, and you know, I'll try and ask my, my peer member, board members, you know, just their thoughts on, on having something like that added in, just as a caveat to the hard, fast rule. I do believe we have to have deadlines so that we can, to your point, Scott, have, you be able to logistically fit students in the classroom. But just in those extreme cases, I just want to be mindful of that.
Yeah. And I think that, of course, this is most, most applicable, you know, to the elementary level. But I think certainly to, to put, you know, some sort of a, you know, qualification in that policy, you know, you know, or upon approval of the superintendent, you know, where, you know, it's, you know, if there were extenuating circumstances, you know, and, you know, I think we have, just in kind of the time I've been here, I think we have a, a community that is comfortable, you know, kind of addressing concerns with whether it's the building administration or the superintendent. And, and we have an administrative team that's very good about coming to me if they feel that they're extending circumstances. But, you know, certainly if we wanted to memorialize that policy in some way with like, or upon, you know, appeal to the superintendent, we could do something like that. I think that's fair. I think that's fair.
Doc, just to add a little bit with that, will there be a bylaw to this policy? Because I, I think that that would be, I don't know.
You mean a regulation?
Helpful. Right.
I just wanted to talk, because I know bylaws are board.
Right, right, right. I'm sorry.
Regulations are highly, yep.
Right, right. Because I think that that would go more towards addressing, you know, certain circumstances and expediting, you know.
Well, it's, it's interesting that you mentioned that, Ms. Huerta, because this, and it may be a function of, you know, the fact that this policy came into being relatively quickly, you know, back in the summer, when I think we were, you know, Strauss Esme, and we were all kind of making sense of this, that it, in many ways, it's, it reads a bit more like a regulation. It's very prescriptive and procedural, you know, unlike a lot of policies. And, you know, so I think, you know, to add an additional, you know, an additional line to it, I don't think would be necessarily at, at a sync with the way the rest of the policy is written. So I don't know if you disagreed with that, but.
No, I think that would be.
I, I, I'm sorry, President Trick Scales, please go ahead.
Okay. No, I was going to say, I agree that we can put something in there about extenuating circumstances. And I just wanted to reference that number two, that says a student is only eligible to transition from full-time, remote learning to in-person, commencing at the beginning of a mid-year semester. So we really want to say marking period there is-
I think, well, right. I mean, so, so I think it's mid-year semester would be, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's sort of redundant, because the, you know, the mid-year semester is the end of the second marking period. So it's sort of superfluous. I think what it means is that in some-
But at the elementary level where we have trimester, so we're looking at marking period?
Marking period or trimester. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can, actually, mid-year semester can be omitted.
Okay.
Yep.
Mid-year suggests January, February?
Right. It would, it would suggest the end, basically, the, it's really more of a, right, it's really more of a secondary piece. It would mean like the second, because we do have semester courses at the high school level. But I think marking period does the same thing for us, so.
Right. And we realize that this is going to become kind of defunct, based on what the governor comes up with. And so there's going to be a revision to this at some point, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trick Scales.
I just want to clarify, based on what we've said, we're removing the word semester after mid-year. We're going to add a clause that allows an appeal to the superintendent?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, where is that?
I'm looking on the, at the page that, that documents what the change is. So it's the last page in the staple document. And then-
Okay.
And then-
We're moving mid-year?
Yeah. Well, we're moving semester. So I think we're keeping-
Oh, okay.
If I understand correctly, we're keeping mid-year, but it will be mid-year marking period?
No, we would, we would omit mid-year semester, and it's at the beginning of a marking period or trimester.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, now the clause for appeal. So I have two questions. First of all, from a process standpoint, does this mean that when it comes back to us again, it comes back for another first reading?
It should come back for a second reading and adoption.
Okay. I'm good with that. I'm going to be banging the drum tonight of, of trying to keep these things moving along toward adoption. So, you know, hopefully, everyone will forgive me in advance for being, you know, maybe pressing that issue. I wasn't going to use that word, but I appreciate that. It's the first thing that jumped to your mind without missing a beat. I appreciate that. The other question that I had on this is really just one of, I have to admit that I didn't understand the language in the last sentence that, that begins, for grades pre-K to five, one, I'm sorry, the last two sentences, for grades six through 12, at least one marking period in advance, for grades pre-K through five, one trimester in advance. I understand the difference between, you know, marking period, trimester, but, but I'm not sure what the in-advance part means. What, what is the actual practical application here?
I had the same question.
Great, great minds.
Yeah, exactly.
If I could, I think it's actually the, the procedures in this document. So to Melinda's question before about this being like a regulation, and Scott kind of confirming that, I think it does detail, like the written request has to be received, it has to have a student's name, technology that's needed. So I think a lot of it is outlined here. What I would just ask Dr. C's, if we can align, ensure that it aligns with what our process is in West Orange. Um.
Yeah. Well, the, I have to say, you know, to date, principals have been, you know, we've been approving requests and onboarding students, you know, very expeditiously, because there's been, there hasn't been really any reason not to. We've been able to kind of onboard them quickly. So, you know, you know, this really becomes a, a function of being having adequate time. Well, actually, as Mr. Trick Scale says, as next year, it'll more or less be defunct. And we're really revising the policy in order that we can operate feasibly for the remainder of the year, is really what we're doing here with this policy.
So the link that's to a Google Doc that's here, is that what we use in West Orange? I didn't get a chance to, to pull it up. So on page two, under B, item three, it says, "The request form can be accessed by clicking on the following link, which includes information a parent needs to complete the request," and it goes to a Google Doc. I don't know if that's ours, or if that's Strauss Esme's, that we adopted, that we utilized when we were for requests. I don't, I've only seen email requests asking for, you know, to move to, to onsite. I'm, or vice versa, so.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I'm just wondering the prudence of putting a link in there, because the policy may still be out there on our website, even though it's defunct. And if somebody sees that, if it's a hyperlink, you know, links get broken, and I would strike that from the policy.
Yep. That's a great, that's a great pickup, Ms. Broken, from Mr. Tony Cliff. I will definitely, and so, you know, I think this was, this was a means by which to kind of make it, make it more efficient than also then to have the, the requests, you know, auto-populate into a spreadsheet. But you know what? Let me, I'm meeting with the principals tomorrow, and I can kind of ascertain really, you know, kind of what's the, what's the standard practice, you know, is it, does it tend to be an email, and are they finding that to be manageable? So let me follow up on that, and I can ensure that that's updated for the second reading.
I did, I'm sorry, if I can just come back to this, because I'm not sure that the question that I asked, if it was answered, I didn't follow the answer.
I was gonna ask the same.
So highlighted in yellow on the last page where the new copy is, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so, so here, and again, I think it, I, I mean, technically, for the purpose of this, in advance is sort of moot, because we've, you know, because we've really communicate, I think communicated in the letter that went home on Friday when the deadline is. And, you know, with the understanding that if parents submit the request as of this Friday, then they're eligible to transfer. And, you know, if that in advance was not in this policy, the rest of the language in the policy would govern the fact that if a parent requested it after the 16th, by virtue of the mark, beginning of a marking period or a trimester, would not be eligible to transfer. So the in advance is not really necessary, considering that this is just a short-term revision for the remainder of the year. Though it can be struck, it can be struck, to be honest.
You know, I would say as long, whatever language you feel is clear from the standpoint of administering the policy, I'm good with. I got lost in it a little bit, but that's me. So.
Now that you bring it up, and that's the, the beauty of a different perspectives, I actually don't feel that the final sentence is necessary.
So maybe striking the end, everything that follows. So for grades six through 12 through the end?
Correct. Can be struck.
I have one more question or comment about this. In section B, number two, there's also a reference to 30 school days. And I just wanted to know if that's going to stay the same and be similar to the section D, too, where we've taken out the 30 days. Just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
I mean, it's, it's likewise technically moot. So, I mean, it could be, it could be stricken.
Which, which, Jen, which section?
Section B, number two, on the second page.
Right. There's also a comment- Right. There's also a comment on B, section one. With written request shall be provided at least 14 calendar days before the student is eligible to commence full-time remote learning in accordance with B two. So I think it goes along with, if we're striking the 30 days from B two, would we also strike the days for B one?
Um, not necessarily, because you could potentially have, um, a parent, you know, between now and the end of the school year who, whose child is hybrid and, um, who they're, uh, requesting to go virtual. But, you know, I, I think that that's a guideline at the end of the day. I mean, I think it's, you know, um, listen, we know that if students hybrid one day and, you know, um, they're virtual the next, and we get the request from the parent that says, look, you know, I'm looking to keep my child home virtual, then, you know, um, we make note of it in the system. So, um, that's, that's a much easier transition to navigate just because it doesn't have any impact on operations.
Right.
Um, we just need to note it for the attendance that the child would be coming in.
Okay.
All right. Have we, uh, exhausted conversation on, on this policy? All right. I'm hearing the silence sounds like a yes to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make note of all those changes and have them reflected in for the 19th.
Terrific. And I'll send my notes as well, um, on this and hopefully our notes match.
Right. So do we want to go back to the first three, um, attendance advertising and school policy? So the ones that were not up for first read, the ones that are part of the workshop and not the first readings?
I thought.
Uh, do we want to just wrap up the first readings before we move on to those other items? Get the first readings out of the way?
I think so.
I was just following the agenda items, so I don't wanna, I don't know if we, if there's a procedure we have to follow in terms of policy workshop and then first reading. So I'll, I'll divert that to Ms. Trixgales if we have to, uh, oh, if it makes a difference.
They're muted, Ms. Terry.
I think we're flexible enough. We can, we can stay, stay in the lane where we are right now. Okay.
Okay. All right. So, um, the school and facility names, um, I think Dr. Seay kind of already mentioned, um, it was just adding in, the additional verbiage that we discussed last, uh, last meeting. Um, I don't know if there's any further questions, but I think this one we can move forward. And, um, if the team is in agreement, we can move it towards, uh, do the first reading tonight and adopt it at the next meeting.
Yes.
Yep, I think agreed.
All right. So Dr. Se, we can put this on for Monday's meeting?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
And then, um, the district sustainability policy, which is seven, four, six, one. Um, I think we, again, this one was, um, updated. We just have to memorialize it with Strauss S. May. I think we can move this one as well to second reading and adopt on, um, Monday's meeting. Um, and that should hopefully, um, definitely assist with the green team in, in getting some of their, uh, much deserved credits towards the sustainability.
I did have, uh, one question about this. I don't know. Did anyone else have any questions before I, uh, dive into it?
My questions were answered.
Okay. So I just wanted to note that, that, a- and I believe, uh, Dr. Kaskon already spoke to this. At our last policy workshop, we expected that some of the options would be selected, but instead it appears that all of them have been selected. And I just wanted to make sure that, um, that's in fact intentional, uh, that we didn't mean to select every option.
Yes, sir. Um, upon, uh, some follow-up with our director of buildings and grounds, the, the, the items, which I was not entirely sure, um, he confirmed that we are in compliance with those pieces and have been actually for some time.
Terrific. And that was Mr. Semino?
Mr. Semino.
Yes.
Terrific. That answers both of my questions. I'm, I'm, I've, I'm in favor of moving this forward.
Yes.
Anyone else? Any discussion?
No, I say it's a go.
All righty.
All right. So, um, moving right along, the next, um, policy that we have up is, um, 5200 attendance. Um, one of the first questions I had was in the first paragraph, it says, children between the ages of six and 16. And I was just wondering, um, if we knew where that comes from, because we do have an 18 to 26 population that I'm sure we expect them to attend school. Um, we, I believe our kindergarteners in pre-K are earlier than six. So I just wanted to get some thoughts on about the, the ages that are listed here and, and how that plays into our school district.
Uh, I believe that's compulsory attendance and it's, um, 18A is referenced in that first sentence. Kindergarten is, is optional based on districts.
Right, but not in West Orange.
No, but this is what we're mandated to do. We, we have to do six to 16. We don't have to do kindergarten by state statute.
I, I guess my question is because we're trying to West Orangeize, um, these policies. So that's where my question was coming from. So it, being unique to West Orange, I just want to ensure that we're, we're encompass, we're including all of our student populations.
So, so here's, so here's the thing. So, so if you have, um, so if you put, if you put five, say five through, you know, 18, for example, and you have, um, you have, you have a parent, you know, th- then, then we actually are, we, we are now mandated to ensure that, that families in town send their children to kindergarten, even though, it's, even though it's optional, right? So, so it puts the district in a position where we're, we're, we're obliging people to do something that statutorily they're not responsible to do. Uh, becomes virtually impossible to enforce. Whereas between the ages of six, essentially first grade through whatever grade folks are on, you know, in six, at 16 or happen to be.
Sophomores?
Yes, sophomores or, you know, um, we, by, you know, their, parents are statutorily, parents, guardians, caretakers are statutorily responsible to ha- ensure that their, their, their children are coming to school and we are statutorily responsible to hold them accountable for that if that's not happening. So that's kind of where that comes from. But obviously, you know, if we have kindergartners, um, you know, we're in their kinder, you know, obviously our five-year-olds were focused, you know, just as much on ensuring that they're attending regularly than would be for, um, you know, a first grader or any other grade. But that's where that comes from.
Um, okay. I don't think I had any.
Um, the, the next question I had was about the school day and the definition of a school day. It says, shall not consist of less than four hours. Um, how does that align with our current Friday schedule? At the elementary schools, I apologize. Um, because I know for the high school, it's very clear that that's for labs and whatnot. But I just, I just had to question if our students don't have labs, don't have any special services. I know we have, it's asynchronous, which means they have work. But how do we, how do we, how are we caring for the four hours that they're required to be in school, quote unquote? So I just want to make sure, like.
Students should be getting between 30 to 45 minutes of, um, of asynchronous learning for each of the core content areas. And of course, now they should be getting, um, 30 minutes at the beginning of the day, 30 minutes at the end of the day. Um, and they should be getting some small group instruction, um, as well. So I think that's how we're covering it. But I should admittedly go back and, and check with Mr. Mendez and find out how that was considered. Because obviously, when we built the model, we were putting a critical eye on compliance with the statutory requirements, so.
Right.
I had a question that kind of goes off of that with what Ms. Merklinger brought up. Yeah, how is this being handled, attendance with virtual? Because I know that many students had trouble logging in. You know, personally, I have a child that's very resistant to it. So, you know, the attendance isn't really there. So how are we handling it, um, in the virtual realm? Like, how is this being applied? Or should we add, um, some type of, I don't know, definition for attendance based off of virtual?
We're, we're approaching, listen, we are, the, we, we've added new codes to the attendance system, to align with the virtual model. So, you know, you have, you have, uh, present in school, you have present virtually. And our, our teachers are taking, uh, attendance every day. Um, and on the middle school and the high school level, they're taking attendance by period. So the same, um, the same, um, you know, the same approach to chronic absenteeism and cuming out of classes is being applied in the virtual realm as it is in brick and mortar. So on the high school level, you know, if you, you know, to believe it's anything more than 17 absences is considered, uh, you know, a loss of credit. So approaching it exactly the same way.
Right. But my concern, I think, would be like if the person, or, I mean, I don't, I guess it would be excused if the student doesn't have access to internet or is having trouble with technology or anything like that.
Sure.
So, um, you know, because there is, you know, that concern with being denied credit, being denied.
Listen, you know, sure, that's a great question. And, and I, and, um, you know, I, I think if, if we were to, um, one of the things I think our administrators and our teachers have done a really good job of is when we're, when we're observing patterns of absenteeism, you know, multiple consecutive days or periods of absenteeism is, it's not, you know, is, is whether it's the teacher following up or the guidance council following up or the building principal following up and, and understanding why that's happening. Um, is there an extenuating circumstance, you know, that, that's there? You know, we've had parents that have been very good about reaching us to tell us that they've been having difficulty with their Wi-Fi with device. And, you know, we've gotten them new devices, we've done all sorts of things to ensure that they have that. And a- at the end of the day, um, you know, there are particularly on the secondary level, on the high school level in particular, where there is that really is the only place where loss of credit is relevant. The high school is always and continues to have an appeal process. You know, where if a student goes above the number of absences, you know, an attendance appeal is held and the parent and student guardian are able to bring forward, you know, extenuating information and circumstances. Um, and what'll typically happen in that case is, is that some form of an attendance contract would be created. And, you know, the student will be given an opportunity to, um, you know, to essentially be on some form of, for lack of a better word, attendance probation, you know, for the, uh, remainder of the year.
And Scott, just to add to it, I think one of the really great things I think the high school was doing, and we kind of mentioned this at the on start, our onsite, onset of, um, the virtual model is, I believe, Mr. Maniscalco and his team, the deans at the high school are, are checking and making calls out when they're seeing, um, trends. And, and I would assume we're doing something along those same lines at the elementary and middle school levels.
Absolutely. And, and I think, you know, um, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, um, you know, we continue to, um, you know, and thanks to students, thanks to the families, and the teachers who were, who were there as well. We're seeing, continue to see goo- very good attendance from our students. Extremely proud of our students. And, and their attendance this year, they've been fantastic. Yeah, listen, we have our, we have challenges like we do every, you know, any year. We have, you, you, brick and mortar. We have, you know, students that struggle with, with attendance and require, uh, but I will tell you that, you know, one of the things that's been put in place already, um, is that, you know, particularly at the high school, starting on April 19th, um, they're bringing in about, above and beyond the existing cohorts, about an additional 100 students that they're bringing in four half-days a week. And these are students who are, have been demonstrating extreme absenteeism. In some cases, seniors who, you know, may be in danger of not graduating. And the same thing goes in our elementary, up to this point in our middle schools. Students who are at risk for, you know, uh, with chronic absenteeism, with retention, you know, failing multiple classes are being brought in on multiple days, um, so that they can be, uh, brought back to, to speed and get back on track, so.
Right. So I guess, sorry.
No, that, go ahead.
Just one more thing, I guess, going off of the, the section where it says I for discipline. Because I know that it's, I know this is, um, this is the, in the, in the regulation part, um, um, when we're talking about discipline, and denying participation in co-curricular activities and athletic competition. I think that, you know, it's been a struggle for some of our students. And so, you know, sometimes absenteeism is more so, I don't know, I just feel like, uh, do we want to penalize them, you know, if they're having difficulties? It could be a social, emotional type of, um, circumstances. I know this would go into the extenuating circumstances that we're talking about. So, um, do we want to put that in the policy? Add a, add something?
Yeah, I think there is, um, I know I saw it, there is a line about extenuating circumstances and appealing and, um, getting approval. I think we also, you know, I, I'm always hesitant to move away from holding students accountable, right? So I, I think we do need to have some sort of guidelines in the regulations, you know, because you don't want to reward, what I'll, for lack of a better way, negative behavior. So if, you know, if someone only wants to come to school because they want to play football, you know, they're gonna come to school. But if they're gonna say, well, I'm gonna get a free pass, so I don't have to go to school, but I can still go to my after-school activity, you know, i- it's a fine line. So I think, um, I think we should keep it in here, but I do believe that there was something about appealing and having that consultation. Should there be extending circumstances that require a student to be out or, um, I think it's under the unexcused app, you know, if it's unexcused absences. Obviously, if there, I think there's, if, if the absences are excused, that wouldn't prevent participation. But if they're unexcused, um, I think that would be up to the building principal to determine.
Uh, y- y- you know, I, I think that, I, I think, um, yeah, first, I think it's important to realize that this, these are the regulations, not the policy, right? So these are, these are administrative guidelines. You know, I, I can tell you, you know, just in my, my dealings with, um, you know, with Mr. Moore and, and understanding how they work with kids up there. Uh, you know, Mr. Moore, coming from a, you know, a social work background, um, really does, to the greatest extent possible, he and his team, to, you know, to kind of try and as, and even as the regulation indicates, it says, um, you know, to the best, best extent possible, determine the causes, right? So I think that's always, you know, the first play. But, but interesting, what you'll, you'll notice is, and there's, there's a, you know, there's a line, the, the insert, which came from the high school team, which is this idea of further absences of 10 consecutive days or more may result in a student being dropped from the roles, right? So when they brought this, this recommendation to me, it wasn't without pause and some further discussion that I ultimately felt comfortable moving it forward to the board. Because it seemed a bit Machiavellian to me, right? It seemed a bit hard-edged. But what I, I got from the team was, is like, at certain point in times, they need some teeth. They, they, you know, when you get to a point and, and you need, there has to be something for which the student has skin in the game, in some cases, which moves them to compliance. It's never the first, it's never the first option, but sometimes they need something like that to really get, get people moving in the direction they need to. So I, I think that, um, that's really the approach I think the high school uses. Um, I think they also, you know, uh, you know, one of the ways we, we get kids coming to school is by ensuring that the environment, the school culture is positive, the climate is positive, kids feel comfortable, they're engaged. So it's, it's very holistic. But, um, that's never the first option. And I, you know, I feel pretty comfortable with the way the high school team goes about that.
Yeah. Dr. Kaskon, I wanted to ask about, um, since we're talking about compulsory attendance. And so by the time a student reaches 10 consecutive days, what would have been done? Do we use five-day notices here in the district? Which is for everyone's benefit, is a parent who is responsible for a student between six and 16, um, would be served by an attendance officer. A notice that their child must report within five days. So I'm just wondering what the interventions are. Even as we look in the regulations, um, I'd like to see a bit more specificity to cover the board. Are letters going out at absences three, six, nine, 12, 15? I see things such as a reasonable attempt. I'd like to know what that means. That could mean different things to different people. Is it a phone call? Is it a letter? I think we can, we can tighten it up a bit more to protect, uh, the board as well as our administrators.
Right. Um, so that's not a problem. We, we can certainly, um, Right. Um, so that's not a problem. We, we can certainly, um, you know, revise the, the regulations to have them more uh, closely, um, memorialize what the administration does. I can tell you that those letters, there are multiple letters that are sent down in advance of that, multiple phone calls. Um, but we can do that. We can revise the regulations. Um, I, you know, I'm not sure whether that, um, you know, does that prevent you from, from adopting the policy?
Not at all, not at all. My, my concern, um, clearly is the regulation. That's what I'm just questioning, just wondering, um, if we add this sentence about ten consecutive days being absent, what, what is the regulation supporting? What have we done to make sure that we're just not allowing ten consecutive days to accrue? Um, what steps are being taken to remediate it?
To pay back off that, um, Dr. C, did we have, I, I know you had, um, the high school look at the, the policy. Did they look at the regulations as well? I'm just wondering if maybe we need to, um, have the attendance regulations compared to our Western High School handbook as well as our elementary school attendance policies and if those principals have weighed in on the regulations. Do we lose Scott?
No, no, I'm just, um, I'm sorry, I'm just making notes there that, that we can do that. Sure. That, I mean, what I, what I might suggest then is, is that, um, you know, is that we, you know, we just adopt it without that language and then we come back to it because, um, you know, it just, it's, you know, get, getting, getting, um, get, getting the focus and the time right now for building based administrators, an extremely busy time. I'm just, the timeliness of when that will be coming back to the board in for a second reading, you know, it, it could be weeks, several weeks before it's, it's that feedback comes back, then that feedback needs to be brought forth to the board for further consideration. So it's just, we're, we're talking, you know, in terms of we want to adopt this manual by June, then what I might suggest is we just adopt the attendance policy as is, and we can move that other language forward.
Or, uh, or alternatively, can we consider adopting the policy with the language and the understanding that at some point the regulations will be updated?
That, that would be the board's prerogative, whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, that's Gary, that's what I was just about to ask if we could do that.
Yeah, I, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, um, if the high school team, so this was already an adopted policy. And if the high school team felt that it was important to bring it to your attention and get it over to us to ask for that time, I certainly don't want to, um, prevent that from moving forward. Okay, so.
I just have a one more question based off of that. Um, how many policies do we have that we are planning to come back to? Do we have a list or a log of, you know, the ones that we're passing through, but we're going to come back to it for.
Yes, that's the, the one that Gary created that we've been sharing and working through. That lists which ones have not yet been adopted. There's a column for it.
No, but I'm saying if we're going to pass this one on for a second reading.
Oh, gotcha.
We want to come back to it after it's been approved and everything. Do we have a, a, a list of that?
Gary's adding another column.
So actually here, here's what I think I would say and, and this where it's a, it's a, um, a timely question because I think there are a number of policies where, um, this is going to be an ongoing issue for us. Uh, when I mentioned earlier that I think, uh, what was the word that you used, Dr. Kascun, to describe my list?
Cantankerous.
Cantankerous, thank you. Um, part of the reason I want to be cantankerous with this is we need to get these policies adopted. We've told the public that we will complete this work by June. And at the rate we're going, we're, we're pushing it. We're really pushing it. Um, that said, this isn't, uh, these aren't written in stone. What we do is we adopt the policies and then every one of us has a responsibility to ourselves as a board and to the students in the district to be familiar with the policies and bring forward any concerns about it. And that can come forward at any time. Uh, Mrs. Merklinger and myself are on the policy committee, and I think that the proper procedure would be that if any member of the board had a concern about something in a policy and wanted to recommend a change to the policy, um, maybe bring it forward to us, bring it forward to President Trig Scales. And then we can find out whether there is, um, support on the board for making that change and then move that forward at any meeting at any time. Um, so yeah, there, there's not like, uh, this is not a, once, we, once we do it, it's sealed and this is it forever. This is, uh, an ongoing opportunity to make improvements. Right now though, I think it's important for us to all keep an eye toward adopting these policies.
Absolutely. I concur. Move, move it forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think I have a little bit of a different perspective. Um, I think that while we do have to move policies forward, as I've said from the beginning of this, we also have to be diligent in what we're doing. So we can't just, you know, wholesale, just say, adopt everything across the board. I think we have to do. Oh, no, I just mean in terms of, you know, I don't want to just, um, put something by the wayside or just pass it along because we have this deadline that we set, you know, I want to make sure that we're, we are looking at our current West Orange policies and, and doing our diligence like we've been doing. Um, so I just want to reiterate that fact.
I'd just like to add as well that we've been working as a committee of the whole to get this done. This is actually the third configuration of a board, um, working on it. So we have certainly been diligent. But I have to agree, um, that we need to move chunks forward. And then the policy committee's work never stops, that, that work never stops. And we can continue to modify, uh, amend and, um, but we, we need to, we need to meet our deadline, um, of, of June this time. We've moved it and I think it can be done. And so far be it from me to slow down the process. That is not my intent at all.
Right. I agree. Um, but I also, you know, uh, you know, agree with Ms. Merklinger that I don't, you know, I, and I don't feel that you guys haven't been diligent or we haven't been diligent. Um, because I know Miss, you know, we're in a, you know, I feel like we're kind of not rushing it, but, um, yeah, we are, uh, pushing, I, that's why I ask if we're keeping like a log or something of policies that we've passed. Um, but we want to come back to, um, so that doesn't get lost in, in, in the policy work.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I believe that to date, we haven't specifically kept a list of something that we want to come back to. We've instead spent a lot of time making sure that the policies that we're passing include the language that we want. At this point, I would suggest that literally I think Dr. Kascun was, uh, was joking, but I'm going to do it. I'm going to add a column that, uh, you know, your initials down if it's a policy that you would like to revisit in the future. And then I will reach out to you, um, uh, and we can talk about it and maybe document what the concerns are and figure out a process we're working on it. I would just suggest that we do that after we've completed adopting the slate of policies so that we can complete our work here and then circle back to the ones that we think require, um, improvement.
I agree with that and I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that it doesn't get like buried or put off or, you know, because I feel like once we pass it, it might be more difficult to have to come back to it. You know, uh, because.
I agree.
Just, you know, just wanted to keep, be mindful of that. Not that we're, you know, we're resistant to change anything or anything like that, but just, you know, have, make, you know, keep a record of, um, or just a tab of, you know, what we are agreeing to come back to.
Sure. I'll, I'll, like I said, I'll add that column and, and, but it shouldn't be difficult to make
Right.
changes as long as at least three members of the board support those changes. Um, the only reason in the future that I think it would be a challenge to make a change is if there wasn't, uh, you know, a, a majority of the board that supported it. But bringing it up, suggesting it and, and winning support, no reason that that can't happen at any time.
So I think maybe with this one, um, for the policy, we are, I think we're all in agreement that we can incorporate the feedback from the high school. Um, or the administration incorporate that into this policy, um, the policy forward, which is really what our goal is. Um, I don't think we, when we set the goal of June, we said regulations had to be adopted by then. So, um, I think we can separate in this instance, separate the policy and the regulation. Um, because I would like to see it have the administration and, and granted, I understand what, what Dr. Scott's going to saying about the regulation and the amount of time that maybe needed. Um, I'd still like to put it out there to the building principals to, to review and, um, take a look at the high school handbook on our attendance policy and incorporate that verbiage into the regulation. Um, I, I think specifically to Terry's point with tightening up some of the, the, what steps are taken. I think that is outlined in the handbook if I'm, if I recall correctly. Um, so with that in terms of next step, and I know Gary, you're, you're taking good notes, um, for us, but so I think the policy, we're going to move forward with the incorporated language. Um, so I think Scott, if I have it correct, then this would be for second reading on Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll look to do that and adopt it. And then the regulation, we will come back to, um, after administration has had time to take a look at it.
Love it. Teamwork.
Okay. All right. So the next two, um, are, are somewhat similar. It's advertising on school property and advertising on school buses. Um, so we'll take the first one, which is school property. Um, to Dr. C's point before, what I did was I took the Strauss SMA policy and incorporated the verbiage from our West Orange policy that I thought based on the notes that I had from our previous discussion, um, were items that we wanted to include. Um, I left question marks on some of the, um, advertising space on school districts website and advertisements to be included in school district productions, as I was not clear on if we said we were going to adopt those, if we want to check those off. But I did add in, like I said, the items from the West Orange policy that were missing from Strauss SMA that we had discussed, we want to include. Um, so I'll just maybe open that up for any questions or feedback, thoughts on what we want to do on, on the school property piece.
I'd like to just first say, uh, Mrs. Merklinger, uh, this is, what you, what you did here is not a task I would have wanted to take on. It was not, not an easy thing to edit together two different policies that in some ways are very similar and in some ways are very different. And I think you, uh, you did a nice job of finding, first of all, everything in the Strauss SMA policy is still here. Nothing got lost from Strauss SMA. Um, you incorporated much of the West Orange and found places to incorporate it, edit it, move things in that I think, uh, or make a lot of sense. So I just wanted to thank you for, it was a lot of work you put into these two. So I wanted to thank you to that, for that.
Thank you.
Really, and then in general, the, the only comments that I had in going through it is that there are some places where I think the language got a little bit wonky. And, uh, and I don't know that I want to take the time in the meeting tonight to go through it, just cleaning up like, uh, the grammar in a sentence. So it flows a little bit better, but those are the kinds of changes that I would like to make. And then noting also that on the advertising and school property on page two, there, the second to the last bullet at the top, the one that begins the display of product names on vending machines. Uh, there's a reference to a board policy at the end of that. And I might want to get a little more specific because it's board policy eight, five, zero, five, which is local wellness slash nutrient standards. And I can include those notations on, on the documents that I put to, uh, put together. But that was really the only, the only real change that I would recommend to this, uh, um, after the work that you did, other than the little grammatical things here there.
Thank you. And, um, that's a good catch on the board's policy on the local wellness because that is definitely from West Orange and I did not catch that. So thank you for catching that one.
Can you, uh, repeat Gary where that is again?
Uh, sure. On page two of the document that we're looking at, uh, that page two begins with some bullet points. The second to the last bullet point begins the display of product names on vending machines.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Sorry. I was just trying to follow, keep making sure I'm following.
Oh, no, no problem. Oh, actually, you know what? I, I'm sorry. There is one other thing that I had a question about. At the top of page two, uh, the, the last sentence before the first bullet point that we see there, um, states that, um, so it references the township of West Orange's sign code. And actually, I'm sorry, let me back up to the beginning of the sentence, which is on the previous page. Yeah, signage on school district property, which may also include, but is not limited to areas in and around athletic fields, uh, and grounds on fences, on school vehicles, et cetera. Then it ends, must only include the advertiser's name, logo, telephone number, website and email address, which seemed very strangely specific and limiting, uh, in terms of what can be in that. And I'm not sure what the intent of that was. Was wondering if anybody on the call is aware of why that limitation exists in the West Orange policy.
That is part of the West Orange township sign code.
So, wh- which would be that, that, and that, that regulates what's in signage on public property?
So, yes, that's kind of like, you know, if you were going to the zoning board or planning board and there, you know, you would have to ask for ordinances or, um, special permits and things like that from the town, that's where that comes from.
All right.
So it's certainly something we could take up with the town council, um, as part of, uh, our next town council liaison meeting, we can ask for clarity around if that still applies to the West Orange School District. Um, but yeah, that is.
I was questioning it because I was wondering, you know, at, at some point there's that sort of loss of value to the advertiser and missed opportunity. Um, I, I don't know in the end how, how big a deal it is. It just sort of jumped out to me that it was very limiting. Um, in terms of what the advertiser did place, like no, no tagline or slogan or anything like that. And, um,
Or advertisement of a sale or something like that, I think, maybe.
Yeah. And I thought like, if that's the case, I'm not sure that there's a need for the rest of the policy because, you know, i- if, if you're saying that all that you can say is your name, logo, telephone number, website and email address, the rest of the policy makes no sense.
Well, I think this is specific more, to be honest with you, with the athletic fields and not wanting our fields to look like, uh, billboards.
But it says athletic fields, grounds, fences, vehicles. So it's not limited to just the athletic fields.
Right. So that, that first part of this, the first part of that bullet, that's Strauss SMA. That was not West.
Right, right, right.
Second piece where it says signs on or at the school district facilities and athletic fields that meet the township of West Orange sign code must only include advertisers name. That second half, that comes from West Orange. The first part of this comes from Strauss SMA.
Right. So I guess, um, to Gary's point is like clarifying or clearing that up a bit because if we're going to, you know, if I, I think just, uh, just clean it up to be more, I guess, clear. If we're merging it, I don't know. Uh, I don't know if I'm getting my point across, but, um, just because, um, I know we were trying to merge the first, the, I mean.
Yeah, I think what we have to be careful of is we have to be, we have to align with the town's.
Right.
Uh, signage requirements, right? So I think maybe this is something that we take back, um, to Ms. Castellino and, and work with her on how the sign code, um, regulations of West Orange apply to our school district facilities.
Okay. Because this one is only talking about school property. I mean, I guess that would include school vehicles also. But the other one, oh, the other one is talking about buses, right? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think, um, who, who is our, who are liaisons with the town council?
Myself and Terry.
Okay. I mean, I, I, again, I don't think that this is the biggest deal in the world, but I wouldn't mind getting some clarity around what, what the intent of that was and whether it actually belongs.
Yeah. And hopefully we can do that quickly so that it's not bogging us down. Um, that we can just get clarification on school property and the town's code.
Right. So Cheryl, you, you said you put question marks on the next couple of bullet points.
Yeah. So you'll see, um, advertising and space in school district publications. I have an X as in like we did for the sustainability where we're X-ing that off because we're going to include it. I put question marks on the next two advertising space on school district website. I wasn't sure if, if we wanted to allow advertising on our district website. That's, I, I'm, you know, open to discussion on that. Um, I'm not one for bait. I, um, I'll tell you like social media, Facebook, I hate advertisements being in there. Um, so I, you know, I, just with it being our school district, I, you know, definitely open to, to what everyone's thoughts are. I wasn't sure where we landed on that one. I don't recall us saying, yes, we want it or no, we didn't want it or, or what we were looking to do. So that's why I left those a question mark.
Yeah.
And the same with the next one. Um, I know, you know, in some of our previously in, you know, when we did school productions, plays, whatnot, we did have like local businesses did advertising in our like programs and things like that, which is covered under one of the other, um, one of the other, uh, I think the one right above it. But in terms of, um, being aired on media outlets such as television, internet radio, because we don't, if, if I have it correctly, and Lawrence. if, if I have it correctly, and Lauren's on, so she can correct us if we're wrong on this. I don't know that we're allowed to advertise on our township, school district TV station.
So we actually eliminated businesses from the program. It costs, that is unnecessary because it's just, it would cost more to put more pages in. And it doesn't cover the cost basically. So we've eliminated any kind of advertising in our programs for the as for the TV channel, as part of the peg channel, the town, there are certain townwide things are allowed to have commercials and that's through the town. So they are the ones, and it's only broadcast on the town channels, excuse me, the town days. I know it's the same channel, but it's like certain days. So they have the ability to, within the downtown alliance and their chamber of commerce are allowed to produce musicals within a certain timeframe to advertise. But beyond that, yeah, there's no advertising on the entertainment channel, the educational channels.
Okay. And Lauren, we do also, we, but we do allow advertising, advertisements to be sold in the yearbook, correct? Or no?
That's not my, I don't want to, I don't have the final word on that. I believe I've seen advertisements.
Yeah, I feel like I've seen it, but I just, yeah.
I would like to, I would like to make an argument though, that from the standpoint of a policy, I would argue that especially looking at the section that begins on page one, this is saying what the Board of Education may enter into, what types of contracts we may enter into. There's no obligation to enter into any of these contracts. And, and a board can certainly turn down any opportunity at any time. But if we choose to limit what's in the policy over here, then a future board could only accept that kind of advertising if they first revise the policy, which seems to me from where I'm standing, kind of heavy handed. So I'd just like to make an argument in favor of permissibility in the policy. And then let boards decide what they want to actually award as a contract in the future.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I, I agree with you, Gary, like in terms of the school district website, if we want to leave that as a check, as a bullet in here. It doesn't sound like the TV channel that, that's ever going to change. So that's, that would be the only reason why I would remove that one. But I can certainly, you know, see your point on keeping it open ended, so to speak. But it doesn't sound like the, the media outlets, what's, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Currently we're in a 20 year grant contract with them. So it wouldn't be until 2040, I think at this point.
The rate we're going, it may be that long before. Yeah, I, I get that it's likely a moot point. You know, again, I just think there's, there's no, there's no obligation and certainly just because a policy says we're, we're permitted to allow advertising on the TV channel, doesn't mean that the TV channel allows advertising. So, you know, you've got to meet many requirements in order to get something actually aired.
Yeah. And I agree, sorry, Melinda, I agree with the may, you know, it leaves it open ended and it, it gives the board the prerogative in the future. So I just wanted to throw my two cents in on those two question marks.
Lauren, did you have a question?
Um, I guess with the district website, right? Like you said, I don't think that there's any advertising that goes on there in general. But I don't know how the new website is doing. Are we talking about pop-ups here? Are we talking about like when we're advertising for the play, you know, promoting local businesses when, you know, they're paying for it. I think that those are things that we can take into consideration. Is there a regulation for this? Is my next question.
There was not.
There was.
I think we, yeah, I want to say, I think Gary tried to look it up last time and there wasn't a regulation.
Right. Cause I think that that would help. And then to Gary's point, I think giving the flexibility to allow it to happen because I don't, you know, to, to your point Cheryl, I haven't seen many advertisements and I don't know if that's because of the regu, because the policy is so great or so strict or whatever it is, but um, I think that, I don't know, do we want to begin to allow or an outreach to local businesses to do these kinds of advertisement? Because I think that it would definitely add, you know, another revenue stream for us. I don't know how anyone else feels on that.
Let me ask, ask something here. So I, I almost feel, I feel like, you know, this is maybe, maybe this is over complicated. And I think I'm, you know, so, so at the end of the day, like, like, like we, so I think what I'm hearing is, is that the board is not averse to in, in, you know, entering into some sort of a, a business relationship whereby someone would advertise and we would generate revenue. If you create an approval process whereby, you know, it's the, the, the vendor, you know, you know, in other words, it has to go start with the business office, send it reviewed by the superintendent and all advertising ultimately has to be approved by the board. You know, including what it says, where it goes. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't the approval process itself sort of take care of anything? Cause ultimately the board can determine what they're, what they're comfortable.
Yes.
We don't have to decide what we're going to advertise right now. We just need
Exactly.
Policies. And then if it comes up in the future, we can reference it.
Right. Yes, indeed.
This is, this is our policy on it.
I think, I think the only thing you want to, you want, I'm sorry, Ms. Merklinger, apologize. I think the only thing you, you want the policy to protect against is, is, is staff members below the central office level, you know, making, making decisions about that outside of the chain of command and approval from the board. But other than that.
That's it.
Board sees, the board's comfortable with it.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah. So I think, Gary, just to your point, if there's some grammatical things and, and cleaning up that you want to send over, I think we can probably move this one as well to second reading and adoption.
I'm sorry, have this had a first reading?
First reading.
Yep.
Yes.
This was, we did a first reading at the last meeting.
Oh, got it. So with these edits, even with these edits, we would be able to move it to a second reading. Got it. Okay.
Yeah. So, um, if I understand that correctly. So my thought would be then where I had the question marks, we'll make as X's. Or we can just make them as bullets, I guess. I don't think we had to follow, like I said, it was, I was taking the Strauss SMA and just for the, for ease of this conversation, just making it so I could clarify which was from which. But so with those, we'll include those as bullets. And then we can move this to adoption, or second reading and adoption on Monday, if that works with you, Dr. C.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, I think, I think as long as it just for the board, I mean, because obviously we wouldn't necessarily have time to take this and turn it over to Strauss SMA for them to create like a clean proof. But provided that, you know, the language, we were in agreement in the language, we could adopt the language and then submit it successively, subsequently rather, to Strauss SMA for them to just put it into their template. So that would be.
And then we'll just prove, when they send the proof, we'll just check it to make sure it matches the language we adopted.
Right.
So question, will there be a regulation to follow it? Do we feel necessary to have a regulation or? How would, how would, how would businesses know or, or reach out to, to do advertisements?
I don't think that, that's a regulate, like this, I think is just the policy. I don't know if a regulation would, a regulation, I, and you guys can definitely tell me if you disagree, but the regulation would just be what the steps are for how that would go about. So I don't know that in terms of advertising on school property, that and, and the PR piece of that, I think that's a completely separate discussion. I don't think that's part of the regulation. I think the regulation would be, how do we go about when someone reaches out to us about advertising on school property? And then what are those steps? And the process that Dr. C and the administration would follow. If I, if I understand how the regulations work.
That makes sense.
But, yeah, so I think the, to your point, Melinda, though, not, not something to you put by the wayside. I think that's just a separate discussion because I think that has to do with kind of revenue streams and, and a separate conversation that we certainly should have at some point. But I don't, I think that's separate from this.
And the board and the business office would probably set something up such as they do for RFPs and, you know, right. It might be posted on the website. This is how you do it.
Right. So something like that, I think.
Yeah. But I don't think we actually need a, a separate regulation for it.
Okay. So what, so I just want to make clear. So we're going to, how, how is, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Miss Terry?
I think suffice to, I think suffice to say, you, you know, you know, there, there's, you know, the process of somebody saying, hey, like, you know, I, I want to put a sign up like on your property or I want to advertise on your website. Suffice to say that there's, you know, there's going to have to be outreach by that party to someone. And chances are, chances are that someone other than me or the board or the business officer, like, yeah, sure, put the sign up, we're good. And we'll, yeah, we'll negotiate the rate. In other words, I think that the nature of it is because the reality of it is, is that advertising on school property, it's uncommon. It's not done. I mean, it happens in some cases to some small scales, but it's not really done very, very widespread or in any kind of large scale in public schools. That, that just, public schools just have not gone down, K-12 public schools have just not gone down that road very much, you know, as of yet. It's not a standard practice in K-12 education as of today. So I think, you know, if you were, you know, if you had somebody go to a building principal, and let's face it, it would likely be either with a high school, that would probably be the place where if it were going to happen, it would happen. And the likelihood that Hayden Moore would be like, yeah, sure, put a sign up and not come to me or Tanya or the board, I think is, I think is very, very slim. So.
All right. So just in the essence of time, and I know we still, because we still have some other, I know we're limiting on time. Um, so for the advertising on school property, we're going to move this to second reading. We'll send this to Strauss SMA and cleaned up, put it in their template. But we're going to, an agreement on the wording. I think, Gary, you said you're just going to make some grammatical edits to it just to clean it up a little bit. But we will plan to review it for second reading on, review it on Monday for second reading and then adopt it.
Yeah. So if you're okay with this, since you have the, the original document, I can just mark up a PDF and send it over to you with what I noticed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Mark it up. I'll, I'll fix it up. And then whatever edits that you had, that you saw, certainly. And then I'll get it over to Scott or to Cheryl Strauss, Strauss SMA.
Terrific.
The next one that we have is advertising on school buses. So similar, similar process. I took the Strauss SMA one incorporated in where I thought it made sense, our West Orange policies. The only item that I had in question is highlighted in yellow. This was the 50% of funds generated from the placement advertisements. That was part of the Strauss SMAs. Whereas right below it, I have what our West Orange policy said was that it'll be used, utilized in accordance with recommendations from the chief school administrator and approved by the Board of Ed. So I wanted to get everyone's thoughts on which we preferred. My thought would be certainly to, to leave it to the business administrator, the BA's office and the superintendent. And then further review by the Board of Ed to approve it. But I'm definitely open to your thoughts on the 50%, how it's utilized.
I mean, I, I really have no thought on that. And, and you know, again, we're there on the side of flexibility. So I'm not sure why 50% is there, but I would, I would pose the question to Mrs. Flowers and Dr. Casco. And I, I would imagine that you would prefer to have leeway with, with revenue and not be, not have it earmarked at 50% of those funds. And again, I know we're talking about millions of dollars that are going to be coming in from advertising here. So, you know, it's going to pay.
On the school buses that we own, right?
Exactly. Right. So understanding that this isn't, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just looking at six, one, six, four. It's in the most wording cannot change, must adopt as is. So maybe we need to just double check with Strauss SMA as to why this is in there. Maybe they know something we don't know.
That's a good point. I wonder if it has something to do with, with the statute.
Yeah.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we, as opposed to therefore moving it forward on the 19th, send me the, the revised proof. I'll then send it to Strauss SMA for, for their review and see if they have any feedback or objections, if you will, to the, the manner in which it's worded.
Sounds good. Ms. Merklinger, the only question that I had about this one, you know, again, thank you very much. You did a equally nice job on this as with the other one. On page three, the last two paragraphs on page three, so second to last begins, the Board of Education shall collect and assemble. And the last one, accordingly, the board directs the school business administrator. I don't think those belong in this policy. It seemed almost like they were accidentally copied from somewhere else.
That was in a Strauss SMA policy. So that's why I put them there. I didn't think they met, they went along with it either. But it was there. So.
I didn't see it in Strauss SMA. I'm, I'm double checking right now.
But which, which section are you talking about, Gary?
This is on page three. It goes the last two paragraphs.
Yeah. It says, the Board of Education shall collect and assemble the information necessary to discharge its responsibility for fiscal management of the school district and plan for financial needs of the educational program. And then the next one says accordingly, the board district directs the school business administrator slash board secretary to include cost estimates. So on and so forth. That, that was in the Strauss SMA policy that when I opened it up for six, one, six, four.
I'm looking at six, one, six, four Strauss SMA, not the edited, but the one directly from Strauss SMA.
Yeah.
I just don't see it in there.
All right. It was on the last page of the six, one, six, four. I, I can go back and just check, but that's when I pulled it up and I don't know if the version I had is not the most recent. I was doing it from the flash drive that we had. So I don't know if it's been updated on the Strauss SMA side since then, but I will certainly look at that before I send over the PDF to Dr. C.
Okay, great. Yes, sir.
I just want to ask Ms. Flowers a quick question. Ms. Flowers, is how, is that, is that permissible under, under auditing guidelines? Like, could that even, is that, could that even happen whereby if we collected advertising funds, like where, where would those, where would those be deposited? Are those funds that could be carried over year to year? How would that even work?
Dr. C, you referring to the advertising on school buses, the revenue from that?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I would have to look into that and find out.
Yeah. I'm not even sure how that would work from an auditing standpoint.
Yes, I, I'll make a note, look into that.
We should, just to avoid any difficulty, we should be sure to not sell any advertising on buses.
Yes.
Oh, did we double check if this was permissible with Hunterden? Or is, are we talking about just the school buses that are property of West Orange?
Property. School buses that we own.
Right, right. Okay.
All right. So just in the essence of time and chat and moving forward, I'll make the updates. I'll just check, clarify that I was looking at the most recent version of six, one, six, four. Ms. Flowers will take a look at the piece that Scott just referenced in return regards to SMA and report to the Commissioner of Education and the reporting functionality. And we'll, we'll check with Strauss SMA regarding the 50% of funds versus what we have in our current West Orange policy. And then, so in, in regards to that, we will not move this one to second reading on Monday.
All right. I don't see that bit either, Gary.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it in the six, one, six, four. I'm looking at the flash drive version as well.
You know, I think you worked so hard on these. You were bleary eyed.
No, I just actually just even pulled it up right now and it's showing on my, the flash drive I have. It's showing under six, one, six, four. So I must have an older version. I must have an old, really older version of it. So I will make sure I pull the most current one.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I can send you also what I've got if that would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. So six, one, six, four, not, not moving forward at this time, and we will follow up on 50% and on that. On those.
The last three paragraphs, the last, the last three paragraphs on page three.
All right. All right.
I see just six, two, 10 fiscal planning, Cheryl. That's where it's right after, I don't know why, but I see like, it says page two of two advertisement. I don't know why it's popping up as six, one, six, four, but when you read on the sheet, it says six, two, 10. Because I just did like a search and it's coming up under six, two, 10 fiscal planning. And it's those exact two paragraphs, page one of one fiscal planning.
Yeah, no, I printed it out. So that's why I'm not sure where it came from. But I, like I said, I will certainly make that edit.
So regarding the follow up on the question of 50%, is that for Ms. Merklinger or I to reach out to Strauss Estme? Or is that something that the administration is looking into?
I would do that, Mr. Rothstein.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that. Once I have the, the proof, I can do that.
Yeah, I'll get that over to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't really sleep.
All right. Unless I'm mistaken, we've run out of policies for tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say, so that wraps up our policies that we had for tonight on the docket for tonight for discussion. So with that, I think unless there's any further questions, we can wrap up and move on to, I'll turn it back over to Terry to take on the, the next part of our meeting. If, like I said, unless there's any other questions or question, feedback.
Well, there being none, I'd like to thank Mr. Rothstein and Ms. Merklinger as usual for getting us to this point, and especially Dr. Cascon and, and his office, because I know that a lot of work is coming out of your office to make this happen and to expedite it as well. So thank you so much. And now we are ready to move to petitions and hearings of citizens. And these are items that can be on the agenda or non-agenda items. And going to turn it over to Ms. Gravteza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So now we are at the time for petitions and hearings from citizens. Again, it's the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And if you don't see it, if you're on a tablet or an iPad, you just move the mouse and it'll come or move the screen. And we have no hands raised. As I say that, Ms. Bookbinder, raise your hand again. So Julie Bookbinder, if you can follow the prompt on your screen once again.
Hi, thank you, Julie Bookbinder, again, 37 Collmar. Thank you for taking the time again. I was thinking of waiting until next Monday to make this question slash comment, but it does, it is a little time sensitive. So I know the letter just came out on Friday. Very thankful for K to five, planning to go back to four half days in May. But it really does beg more questions. And I know we haven't started it yet. I know that we haven't even got back to the hybrid post the spring break remote period after the break. But I'm curious, what are the specific hurdles to going back for full days? And also, how come Fridays still aren't possible? You know, there are children who I understand in the past, it's been explained that a lot of the services that children receive are scheduled for Fridays, and there's a scheduling hurdle. But I believe that children are actually getting services on a variety of days. They are not all siloed on Fridays. You know, I also appreciate that everyone on the board has day jobs and then they do this afterwards. But I'm certain that in their day jobs and in their jobs on the school board, they solve a lot of scheduling problems. And between the resources of the administration and the board, there just must be a way to solve what seems like a calendar problem so that our children can back, get back to having an education that's complete. The teachers are working so, so hard to teach the children in the hybrid model. It's wonderful that elementary able to get to go back for more days, but we really shouldn't give up. We really need to keep pushing. And we have the time. There's three more weeks until May 3rd. So I'm just hopeful that something can come of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else at this time using the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen? Okay. And so we have Sarah. Sarah with an H, if you can give us, follow the prompt and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. This is Sarah during its 47 Oak Ridge Road. I actually just wanted to check in about Fridays again. And I think the four half days is a nice start, but I'm still a little curious about Fridays. And I know I've heard that it's because of services on Fridays that we can't consider doing a half day that day. But most people that I'm talking to, their services are taking place other days of week as well. I, my daughter does have orchestra on Friday. She has small group reading, but all of those things could be rearranged. And also orchestra would probably be better in person because it's pretty horrific virtually. It, because the kids' violins are not in tune and it is just a complete disaster. So I feel sorry for the orchestra teacher for having to listen to all of that. And so I just wanted to check in on Fridays and, and see like, you know, is there, are we going to reconsider that this year? Is that not on the table? Is that more something for next year? You know, what? I'm just curious. What's the plan for that? Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Wendy. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but Wendy Grave. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and the correct pronunciation of your last name and your address for the record.
Yes, sorry about that. I'm actually on my work Zoom. This is actually Laura Nastner, which you have, you always say you can't pronounce either. So it doesn't matter.
No problem.
I'm at 504 Eagle Rock Avenue. So I also want to bring up Fridays. I do know for a fact that the, my daughter is in enrichment on Fridays for a half an hour in the afternoon. And I do know that that schedule has been changed previously because up until December, she was doing that on Wednesdays. But when the new schedule came out, it got moved to Fridays. So we did change schedules previously. I don't understand how we can't adjust schedules again to make Friday a possibility. Many other school districts are able to rework their schedules, and I just don't understand what all of our roadblocks are. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, do we have anyone else at this time? Okay, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza. Dr. Cascon, would you like to address these questions for us?
Sure, sure. Thank folks for coming out tonight and observing our policy work session and an opportunity to kind of ask some questions. And, you know, I can tell you that, that we haven't taken the, you know, the Fridays off the table in terms of potentially going to five half days. You know, and I, and I, I think I kind of made that clear in my letter that this is, you know, in the immediate term, we're not making a shift. And why, why is that? Well, you think what I've, what I've learned in particular throughout this year is that changes, they seem simple. And they're easy to, to write up a plan for. They're, they're relatively easy to write up a letter that explains what the plan is. But ensuring that 4,000 people and their children read it, understand it, process it, and then actually can put it into practice are, are, are two different things. I, I think also when you think about, you know, making the change, the, you know, disrupting schedules at this point in time, disrupting a rhythm. I'm not suggesting that it's not worth it. I just want to be cautious. And I, I would like to just call attention to some data from the Elementary Parents Survey, which was sent out. Because I wanted to collect that because I wanted to understand kind of what was, you know, just kind of some key data points. And, and some of the things that, I just want to share some of the data points that came out of the survey. Our percentage of parents that responded, they felt that it was just right. It was down slightly, it was down by about three and a half percent from when we administered it in December. It was 60, 60.1% felt that it was just right. We had about 13.6% of, of parents who felt that it was actually a packed day and lessons are long and classroom, you know, who ostensibly would be, there would be 13.6 parents who would be mad at me if I changed Fridays. And then we had about a quarter of the parents that felt that it was a light day. These are, again, ostensibly parents who would, who would, who would consider a change Friday favorable. Interesting. I got it. I got a, I got an email from a parent today who was dismayed that we had added this afternoon check-in because they had actually, you know, in, in line with the current schedule, had actually scheduled a, their, their child into some sort of a, an after school kind of, an after school nature program. And, and this requirement to check in at the end of the day was actually going to make it difficult for her to attend this program. So I, I think it speaks to the fact that parents have put in place a variety of different structures and supports that are aligned with the current schedule. And that that would be, would have been something I never would have suggested as a downside of adding that session in the afternoon. Because I was thinking, well, this is great. Parents want more contact time on a Friday. This is a way we can check in in the afternoon. But there you have it as a parent for whom that's not a positive change. So I think we always just have to be cautious about making late stage changes and how they may inadvertently impact people. How often does your child participate in additional small group sessions with their classroom teacher on Friday? We had about 60% that said yes. We had about a quarter percent that said never. And obviously, that's, that, we need to get better at that. And I've, I've indicated that in my correspondence, and I've made that, that expectation clear with principals, which is that we need to be regularly kind of scheduling, scheduling and rotating students into those Fridays so that students have regular opportunities above and beyond the morning and afternoon check-ins and whatever that asynchronous work is doing. So that they have additional opportunities for interaction with teachers. The, the question of does your child receive some form of additional services on Friday? Of 64% of, of parents responded that their child did receive some form of additional service. And the idea of it being, you know, just simply a, you know, a scheduling puzzle, you know, it's, it's, it's not that it can't, it's not that it can't be scheduled. It just simply means, and yes, might there be some sporadic things happening during the week? Yes, potentially, although I don't have the boots on the ground knowledge to know that for sure. But I would imagine in a district of this size, chances are that might be happening here and there. But the reality remains is that particularly for our neediest learners, our special needs students, related services, ESL students, basic skill students, they're all getting those pullout services on Friday. Now, could we move those during the week? Absolutely. But what would it mean, what it would mean, what would be that all those students would be pulled out of, and we probably would not pull them out of core academic subjects, which means that they would be pulled out of their related arts schedules, their enrichment type experiences. And as a superintendent, I just need to weigh that. Is it, how do I weigh the, the needs of, of 60% of students who are getting those services? And, and what I've landed on presently is let us do a better job of, for those 25% of students, let's do a better job of giving them more on Fridays and being more consistent in the way we're giving them more on Fridays so that we can balance that out. Because certainly those students should not lose out simply because, you know, other students are getting services. We need to treat all students equitably. And that's where I've landed now. But I've been very clear on that. And, and, you know, with, with the leadership team, because I will tell you, and I know sometimes folks think that, you know, I'm not a unilateral decision maker. I don't make decisions that way. And this was a, a question where I really, you know, it would be very easy for me to say to the administrative team, do it. Do it because I said so. It's just not the way I lead because I understand that people who are on the ground, who are in the classrooms or in the schools, have the practical day to day experience. And so when they tell me something, they say, I want to be honest with me. Okay, what, what would be the impact of this? And they tell me, you know, this will be extraordinarily disruptive for X, Y, and Z reasons. I say, okay, but we need to do better on Fridays. We must do better. If we don't do better on Fridays, then we will go to a half day on Friday. And so we're in that proving period, next two or three weeks, where you saw some of those bullet points that were mentioned in my letter. I want to see how that, how that pans out, having an additional check-in at the end, more consistent, regular, small group instruction, and ensuring consistency with those asynchronous lessons. Although I will tell you that the answer to the question about time spent, you know, how much time does your child spend on Fridays completely completing asynchronous assignments? We had about 16% of the respondents say that it was 30 minutes or less. And we had approximately 60% saying that it was between two and three hours. But nevertheless, making sure that we're more consistent in that and that we're, we have the robust asynchronous assignments. I'd like to give it a try to make for a better experience on Friday. And if we can't do that, then I'm absolutely not averse to potentially going to a half day on Friday. I would also say, final point, is that knowing that that would be an alternating three, two, three, two, three, two, you know, at this point in time of the year, I'm sure that, you know, for some folks, it would be perfectly comprehensible and would be no problem to implement. But just in my limited experience here in West Orange for two years, you know, there's no question that there would be some bumps in the road initially in terms of people understanding which days they were there. And we can't afford to have people who are not supposed to be there show up either on the buses or in school because we're going to be at full occupancy with the people we have coming in. So anyway, that's just a top of mind step. But I will tell you that for the folks that called in, it is absolutely not off the table. Nothing is off the table moving forward in the next several weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Cascon. Okay.
I had to, you know, I had, I had probably one too many cups of coffee. I'm going to be be honest and transparent with the board and the members of the public. Too much coffee, too much caffeine today. Sorry. Actually, it's just policy, Ms. Trick scales.
Just policy. I know. It just gets your engines rivved up.
That's right.
Okay, I, I do think that you addressed all of those questions. Yes, I'm just looking over. And A plus, Dr. Cascon, A plus. Okay, so this brings us
I had questions.
To the close. And just before we get there, Ms. Huerta.
Sorry, I know Cheryl looks like she had a question also. I actually was waiting for Dr. Cascon to finish and address everybody else. But I think some of the questions were, one thing is like, what are the, what are the hurdles that we're facing? What is the, the, I know, I, okay, so I guess you explained a little bit. You know, you don't want to disrupt the scheduling for Friday. You want to give it more of a shot. But what in addition to what we're doing now, can we do to get students in class or in even outdoor kind of more social kind of activities? I know we discussed, you know, having tents that we were going to be able to do some type of social, you know, addressing the social emotional part of, you know, can we do something in a limited capacity even on Fridays? Where it would be like more extracurricular, not necessarily maybe even academic. Just because, you know, the emotional toll that it's taking on students not being in school, not being able to be engaged with each other is taking a toll on a lot of families.
So tomorrow's principals meeting, that, that agenda, that is at the top of the agenda is to have, you know, kind of a brainstorming, you know, kind of strategy session. I, I've, I've proposed a couple of ideas from the ivory tower, you know, and, and have already, you know, asked, you know, supervisors and principals to kind of bang those around. And not surprisingly, you know, they've, they, there, there's some good logistic questions that are raised. You know, I think, you know, the one, for example, is, you know, just from the standpoint of transportation, right? So if we, if we make on Fridays, if we make, you know, kind of optional enrichment opportunities on Friday, you know, then we also need to ensure that obviously some, some folks are able to bring their kids in. Some folks are able to walk, some aren't. So we need to make sure that we're designing routes specifically for those students who are not able to come in the afternoon. So those are just, you know, some things that come up there. You know, one thing I found is that everything, everything just comes with multiple layers of additional challenge. And sure, you know, we, we, we have tents. And, you know, and tents can be used outside for, for snack until they can't because the weather doesn't permit, right? So, so in terms of, of planning long term for a tent, you know, to be used outside, you know, then when it can't. You know, um, then when it can't be, then you know, then your model is kind of shot. Um, or you just, you know, you you cancel school that day because you can't, you can't actually ha- have operations in school if you're dependent upon an outside space. Um, but this is top of mind tomorrow. Um, you know, I've asked principals now for a couple of weeks to brainstorm, to come up with ideas. Um, just an example, um, is I know that, um, you know, they're doing a, they're doing a mural at Kelly School. So I think principals are starting to come up with different things where we can get kids in, but we want to also make sure that we're being equitable, that, you know, that all students have the opportunity to do it.
Right.
Right, Ms. Uh, Merklinger, did you have a comment before we adjourn?
Yeah, I just actually had just a follow up question kind of along the lines with the barriers. Um, so thank you, Melinda, for covering that. Um, but just something more, maybe more of a comment or something for um Dr. Steve for your meeting tomorrow to consider. Um, you know, we keep hearing about the six feet, right? And and this moving to three feet and what folks are comfortable with. So I would just ask if, you know, would it be possible to have um maybe a discussion with the administration around if we were to, you know. Put it out to parents, we're going to lessen it to less than six feet at all grade levels. Um, and it's up to parents if they feel comfortable with that. Um, just something, you know, I've been, because we've been hearing so much about the rules. Regulations changing and what what's okay, what's not okay. And and I get there's a lot of confusing information out there. But just something that I would just ask um as part of that conversation is maybe to look at, you know. Um, because we've, we've been saying it's a parent's decision, right? With they want to go hybrid, they want to stay virtual, whatnot. We don't know what the guidance is going to change come September. Um, so just something maybe to consider in part of those discussions is, do we want to look at um? You know, the possibility of of leaning up to parents um to decide what they're comfortable with in terms of sending their kids to school if we were to move. The uh, the six feet to three feet or less. Um, again, not necessarily something for discussion or that I expect you to answer right now, but just something maybe to to discuss with the administration and get their feedback on.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, I, you know, just kind of speak a little bit to it. I, you know, I think that um. You know, it's going to be interesting because, you know, you have these. You you know, you have these guidelines, right, that are that are coming from the Department of Health. Um, and you know, you have, um, you know, Governor Murphy saying, hey, we're in next year, right? So, you know, so so does that mean that the guidelines are going to change or is it just kind of damn the torpedoes? Now, I would agree. I think from a, from a parent standpoint, it's it's parent discretion, right? But but I think we, you know, in and it, and um. I think, you know, we also have, um, we have a responsibility to, you know, to our employees as well, right? And and I and I, you know, in terms of ensuring that we're we're placing our employees into a safe environment. Now, I think the vaccinations are huge. Um, and I think, you know, by September, um, although the CDC obviously said that they weren't necessarily a prerequisite to open. But I do think that by September, we can feel reasonably confident that anyone who felt. Um, eh eh felt that they they they, in order to feel comfortable being in school, need to have a vaccine, should have one, right? And and as such, provided that we can ensure that the 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 maximum social distance is maintained between teachers and students. Then the distance between students becomes somewhat moot because it's really based upon uh parent discretion. So I do think that's a slight nuance. That vaccine piece, I think, is really relevant to September, whereas now it's just slightly different because. We can't necessarily guarantee that everyone has, and as such, we can't necessarily push too hard on the idea that we're. We're going to be looser than the than the social distance guidelines, though I do know that there are some superintendents in the state who have not. You know, who have not demonstrated fidelity to those guidelines, but as you know, you know, I'm one of, I'm not one of those.
Okay, doctor.
One more question, I'm sorry, it's going off.
Ms. Huerta, okay, um, because this isn't on the agenda, you know, we're, okay, so let's wrap up after your question.
Oh, okay.
I love questions, by the way.
I say, I mean, technically, you're allowed.
I'm here all week.
Just in terms of, um, I know you spoke a bit about lunch and being able to do rotating. Um, or eating in the classroom with the barriers. How are we going um moving along with that or in terms of, um, you know, being able to be at full days?
Yeah, so so I I think it's 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 much more feasible on the elementary level. Um. It it becomes a bigger challenge, um, particularly, you know, at the high school and the middle schools by virtue of the number of students. And at the high school where you have a unit lunch, where all students are in the present schedule, the present rotating drop lock schedule are all eating the same period. So um, that that remains a a jigsaw puzzle that I can tell you. Not a single high school that I'm familiar with, public high school has has solved that, unless they're already on a straight eight schedule. And have multiple lunches already, in which case the student population is already adequately divided up. But in a unit lunch type of program like we have, we may need to look at, and some high schools that are on that are looking at perhaps. Modifying their schedule for next year so that you can break the student body up into four different lunches and have students appropriately socially distanced. So admittedly, it's not a riddle that we've solved. Um, and the CDC still recommends the six feet when it comes to eating. Um, you know, so it's not, um, that's, that's something that we're starting to kind of chew on now, no pun intended. Um, and I have no doubt, no doubt that we'll have it solved. Am I confident that we'll have it solved this year? Not entirely. But I am very confident that we'll have so, we will need to have it solved and figure it out for next year in order to move forward pursuant to the governor's order and decree.
Right, I'm just going, because if we're already doing the six feet distancing among the elementary school and we're uh, you know, abiding by that, would that. You know, would we be able to offer full days for the students that are already six feet apart in classrooms?
The students that move, starting on May third, the students will be three feet apart in the classrooms. Will be reduced in the social distance in the classroom for three feet. That's why, that's how we're able to combine the cohorts. In the lunchroom, they would still need to be six feet apart, um, according to the DOH guidelines. Um, and um, you know, and obviously you could use outdoors when possible. Um, but right now, we're focused on getting students in four half days a week and we'll move from there.
Right, okay. I think that's all my questions. I think you, Dr. Kasko.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Huerta. Um, just before I call for a motion to adjourn, I just want to remind everyone that the community vigil. For Stop Asian Hate is taking place tomorrow evening at six o'clock at uh the town hall.
Wednesday.
Excuse me.
Wednesday evening?
Tomorrow.
Tuesday evening at six, yes, that's okay. And I wanted to wish uh happy Ramadan. This is the beginning of the holy month this evening. To our Muslim community. And I just want to um alert my board members that on next Monday. We will have full board reports, committee reports. So we'd just like everybody to be prepared. Um, what's been done and what our plan is moving forward um on our individual committees. All right, and um would ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'm usually opposed, but I'll second it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and uh. Hopefully, the April showers are going to bring beautiful, beautiful Mayflowers for us. Good night. Thank you, Ms. Gravteza.
Thank you, guys. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, I'll end for those both on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Have a great night.